In Jesus' name, and we ask you Father God on this night, God, that you will touch God each one of our city council members. God, and we do a special live for Mr. Mary Dawn Hardy, God who is not present here on tonight. God, we pray a special prayer for him and his family. God, we pray that you would arise, God, and demonstrate God's mighty power. God, we ask that you would grant God unto this city council, God, wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and revelation that they need, oh God, to continue to move forward and to move this great city of Kinston forward. God, continue to connect them to resources, Father, in the name of Jesus the Christ. And God, help all of the citizens of this great city of Kinston. Help us all to come together and unite, God, for one common purpose, and that's for moving the city of Kinston forward. God, we ask you now to help all of us, oh God, do all that we can, God, to be a blessing to this great city. Father God, we ask now that you continue to bless God, each and every one, God, that's present here on today. God, the ones that's not present here on today. God, we ask that you move, God, by your mighty power. God, as well, knowledge, can't nobody do what you do like you do when you do, God, what you do, because you're God. And Father God, when you're done doing the work, God, when you're done doing the work tonight in this city council meeting, God, we'd be also careful, God, to give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory. It all belongs to dying, and this is our prayer in Jesus' name, and we say amen.
Please remain standing for the pleasure of the leaders.
Pleasure of the leaders, Senator Frank, of the United States of America, and due republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Swenson.
Here.
Councilmember Suggs. Councilmember Seeforth.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Hardy.
Present. Citizen comment. A citizen must sign in before the start of the meeting if they wish to address the city council. Citizens should state their name and the address before beginning their comments, and may speak up to a maximum of three minutes. Citizen speaking, seeking assistance, asking questions, will be contacted by a member of the governing body or appropriate city staff. Madam Clerk, are there any?
Mr. Curtis Henderson.
Okay. All right, good evening, city council, city officials, and public. Hope everyone is doing well today. I come today to let everyone know, let the kids know that, six eleven North Michael Wayne Street. And I come representing Hope to Destiny for Youth, a nonprofit organization geared towards educating our kids on gun violence, gang violence, and substance abuse. And I come today to let everyone know that we are doing an Easter cookout on April the nineteenth, right at six eleven North Michael Wayne Street. An Easter cookout for the kids. We're not going to do the baskets this year. We're just going to do a little function, a little cookout for the kids and anyone else that comes. Adults and kids are welcome. Everyone in here is welcome to come and share with us. And also, I got to keep reminding you all about May thirty first. At Holloway, we are having the STEAM program. We are doing the science, technology, science, technology, engineering, art, and math program we're having. And it's from Saturday, May thirty first, at ten o'clock until five o'clock. And we have participants coming from University of Houston, NC State University, and the local schools. So I'm hoping everyone can get down there and at least come participate with the kids. And we're just going to have a good time. We're going to feed them and educate them on technology, math, and arts, and engineering. And that's about all I got to say this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Madam Clerk, will there be another?
No, sir.
Adoption of the agenda. If any council member wishes to revise their agenda, the motion to add or delete an item will be entertained before the adoption of the agenda. Are there any? Hearing none. So I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion was made in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on November the nineteenth, twenty twenty four, November the twenty first, twenty twenty four, December the third, twenty twenty four, and February the eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Madam Clerk, would you like to entertain?
No, sir.
Anything from the council? I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion was made in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing. Consider approval of rezoning request for property from RA twelve residential to RO residential office. Ms. Elizabeth Blunt.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, council. The first public hearing that we have is a rezoning request. Staff received the rezoning request from Neuse Landing Homes. This is an area of the existing property. The property is located at seventeen eighty five Highway two fifty eight north. The applicant wishes to rezone this property from RA twelve to RO residential office. This property has been various commercial businesses, but they have been nonconforming. The applicant is interested in ensuring his proposed land use is in compliance. The property is located in the RA twelve zoning district. Surrounding zoning districts are all RA six to the north, RA twelve to the south and east, and B one to the west. Surrounding developments are all single-family dwellings, except for Bethel Church and the school to the west. And looking at which land use would best fit for this request, it was decided that RO, rather than B one, would coincide with the existing residences and institutional slash office uses while not creating a nuisance for the adjacent neighborhood. According to the comprehensive plan, the property is located within the residential land use sector. This request is in compliance, which recommends uses that should not impact traffic patterns and neighboring communities. This is a picture of the property, the front. This is a picture of the side of the building. And this is the picture of the rear of the building. This is the rezoning map showing the building and the parking plan. Included in your package was a list of uses and the RO zoning district planning board recommended approval during their regular scheduled meeting. We do ask that council's recommendation includes whether the request is consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anything from the council?
Ms. Blunt, this property has been, I guess, would say, misused for several years since it's been at that corner, correct?
Yes, sir.
Anything further from the council? Ms. Blunt, this is a, we are now going into a public hearing. We are now in a public hearing. Would there be anybody to speak in favor of or opposition of? Okay, could you come to the podium, Ryan?
Hey there, my name is Marsha House, and I'm a local realtor with Remax Southland, and I'm here representing the buyer of the property. So if you're wondering what the buyer of the property is interested in doing with it, it's only enhancing this area and helping it continue to grow with the infrastructure that you guys are doing here within the county, updating it, and we want to continue to help be a part of that. So this is a local builder that is interested in buying this property, and he would have meetings there to help people build their homes, whether it be a spec home, talking to them about that, building custom homes, design meetings, things like that. So it won't be, you know, a heavy traffic area. We're not going to have a lot of people there. It's just a few people in and out during the day and just to have a nice, clean presence in the community here.
All right, thank you very much. Would there be another to speak in favor of and opposition of? Any others to speak in favor of or opposition of? All right. Now we'll go out and close hearing. We are now out of closing, I mean, a public hearing. Is there any question or comments from the council on this particular? Hearing none, saying none. All right. Public hearing, number two. Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion made in a second. All in favor, say aye. And then, and then opposition, say no. All right, motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem Hardy, because this is a rezoning request, the motion has to specifically state that it's inconsistent with our land use plan.
Ms. Can I get a second motion to make sure the zoning is in consistent with the council plan that's been presented by Ms. Blunt? Entertaining a motion.
Motion.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing, action number two. Consider approval of a special use permit to operate a tattoo parlor. Ms. Elizabeth Blunt.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Staff received a special use request from Jamaica Whitfield to operate a tattoo shop. This is an area of the existing property. The property is located at thirteen oh one South Queen Street. There are three buildings on this property, and the applicant wishes to operate her shop in the building parallel to Queen Street, where the star is located on the, on the map. This property is also located in the floodway. However, the applicant is not doing any construction on the property. The property is located in the B one general business zoning district. Surrounding zoning districts are all B one general business. The surrounding developments are a commercial building and Woodlot to the north, the Neuse River and a clubhouse to the east, Ironclad Marketplace to the west, and Red Carpet Inn and Suites to the south. According to the comprehensive plan, the property is located within the mixed-use land use sectors and the flood hazard and wetland overlay. The proposed use is in compliance with the city's comprehensive land use, which recommends commercial slash retail use for development. This is a picture of the property. This is a sketch on how the applicant plans to set up the interior. No expansion or addition will be done to the building. This is a sketch of her parking plan, demonstrating she will have enough parking spaces for her land use. Included in your package are the supplemental regulations for a tattoo shop and the special use permit criteria. The planning board did recommend approval of this request. Just to remind Mayor, this, Mayor Pro Tem, this is an evidentiary hearing based on evidence and swearing in for quasi-judicial decision. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anything from the council? Hearing none. At this time, we're going to a public hearing. Would there be anybody to speak in favor of or opposition of? Everybody who wants to speak needs to come forth and be sworn in.
Good evening, City Council Board. My name is Jamaica Whitfield, address six thirteen LaRocque Avenue. My mission is to bring my unique talent to Kinston and offer each client that comes into my shop a tailored tattoo experience for themselves and not just looking at them as just walking money and have them immersed in comfort, a nice, easygoing tattoo process. I've been apprenticing for a year now, under three instructors, and I feel like I'm ready to go out on my own and offer my service to the people.
Thank you. Anything from the council? All right, thank you. Would there be any others to speak in favor of or opposition of? Are there any others to speak in favor of or opposition of? We are now out of a public hearing. And I'm going to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the special use permit for the tattoo parlor.
Second.
Motion made in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Action agenda. Consider adoption of revised twenty twenty five city council meeting schedule. Ms. Deborah Thompson.
Council, I have included in your packet a copy of the revised twenty twenty five city council meetings. The reason being, we will no longer have a work session. All our meetings will begin at five thirty PM and continue until concluded. I'd like your approval.
Anything from the council? Entertaining a motion?
Motion.
Motion made in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Consider approval of lease to Lenore County Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Rhonda Ball.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The city council is aware that the city and the county both share ownership in three oh one North Queen Street, which is currently the home of the Chamber of Commerce. The original lease, which you have in your package, was signed January twenty first of twenty twenty for five years, with the option that they could extend it for another five years. I received a letter last week from Kale Grady, president of Lenore County Chamber of Commerce, requesting such extension. And if the council agrees, we will process that extension for them.
Ms. Turner, you like that?
Given the lateness of the notice, I would recommend, if you're inclined to approve this, that the motion be to waive the notice requirement and allow the lease to be renewed.
Mr. Turner, could you repeat the last portion, please?
I said the motion, an appropriate motion to, to allow this would be to waive the notice requirement and allow the lease renewal. There's, there's language in the, in the lease itself that allows a five-year renewal, but it requires notice of that intent a little bit before we got it. And so, so the notice was late.
All right, entertain a motion to approve with the waiver of notice request.
Motion.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval request for flight exclusive fireworks discharge permit on April the twelfth, family day event. Mr. Chad Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. What you have in your packet is a fireworks discharge permit. It has their agenda and also the layout that's all within the specs of the state fire marshal's office. I have spoke with the party who will be discharging the fireworks, and they are in clear understanding that even if it is approved tonight, if the state burn ban is not lifted, there will be no fireworks. So they're understanding of that. I do have a copy of the certificate of insurance in the city of Kinston's name, and everything is in order.
Very well, Ms. Turner.
No, nothing further.
All right, entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Consider approval of special events permit for Mr. Allen O'Neill and Jackson Heights LLC Christian Concert, Pearson Park. Chief Coria.
Good evening. This is for the second annual Christian concert. It's going to take place Saturday, April twelfth. They want to block the road off starting at eight o'clock in the morning and have it blocked off till eleven PM. The concert's actually going to be from four PM till ten PM. It's going to take place at Pearson Park. The rental agreement has already been signed with, with Parks Recreation. It does require a road closure, Mitchell Street, just, just south of North, and then right around the bend where Gordon Heritage. That'll be blocked off as well. Let's see. This is not a fundraising, raising project. It's open to the public. They have hired two Kinston police officers to help out with security for that particular event. The whole homeless agreement has been signed, and the city of Kinston is listed as the insurance certificate holder. So no, no issues last year with this particular concert and not to some issues this year.
Ms. Turner.
The package appears to be in order.
Thank you. Anything from the council?
Chief, is it deemed necessary to close the street at eight in the morning?
They would have, they want to set some food trucks up and some other, some other vendors up in that particular bend. So that's, that's their request.
Anything further from the council? Entertaining a motion?
Motion.
Motion was made.
Second.
Motion made in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. In the mayor's absence, I just wanted to give you an update. He and I met with the county manager and the chair of the Lenore County Commissioners yesterday and talked about just some updates on projects that they had going on and that we have going on. But more importantly, we hope to set a joint meeting of both the entire county board and the city board together and get you guys in the same room and talk about projects that you have going on and see where there's some synergies that we could work on projects together. And during that meeting, the hope is that you would look at preparing a joint working committee, which would be a smaller group of the two larger groups that would meet more often and discuss projects. So I sent to each of you a sample of the joint working committee memo of understanding. If you'll take a look at that, just so, once we get the dates for the meeting, you'll be prepared.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Ms. Turner.
Uh, no report. Do you have a need for a closer?
Very well. Anything from the council?
Um. Uh, city manager, is it, is it possible, and I'm not sure how soon that we're looking at scheduling this joint meeting, hoping sooner than later, in so much as we could possibly have conversations between the two governing bodies in reference to the, the tax rate, the property tax rates. You know, I just think it's kind of like meaningful if we could, you know, as, as two, as the two governing bodies, like kind of have that informed conversation in consideration that everyone is so familiar about what their appraisals look like. And, you know, it's just a conversation worth, worth having because unfortunately, someone's going to, someone's going to eat it. And when we consider the citizens, and there's so many renters here, you know, a lot of our citizens are going to be looking at an increase of, of rent. And so I just would, would like for us to, to be able to have that conversation while both bodies are in the decision-making period.
Yes, ma'am, we can certainly turn in items to be considered. Any others that the council may have, we'll turn in those items to have on the agenda. And I will talk to the county manager and try to quickly get those dates. I know they're in budget, and then we're getting ready to get in budget. So we need, we do need to go ahead and have this meeting. So we'll try to get a few dates and try to get the majority to, to agree to that.
Anything else from the council? I know.
Yep, I do want to announce and share with the community that it was publicly announced today by the National Civic League that the city of Kinston has been selected as a finalist for the two thousand and twenty five All-America City Award. This is a pretty big deal for our community. We've previously won the award in nineteen eighty-eight and again in two thousand and nine. And I'm very excited about the fact that we threw our name in the hat again to be a finalist for this award. If you all recall, several city council meetings ago, it was shared with the community that we planned to submit an application. We were able to submit that application, fitting with this year's theme, which is strengthening environmental sustainability through inclusive community engagement. And so Kinston again selected as one of twenty finalists from across the country. Hundreds of cities and towns and villages across this country put their name in. But because of the work we've been doing here in this city to foster community development and community engagement, climate resilience, and neighborhood revitalization, they saw that Kinston has been a leader in those fields and wants to recognize us with this award. So I'm extremely grateful to the city staff, the city council members, our community partners, who've all been engaged in these different projects. Some of the highlighted projects in the application included the Emma Webb Park Master Plan, which was a collaborative effort we launched in two thousand and twenty one to reimagine one of our city's oldest and largest parks through inclusive community engagement that resulted in a redesign that was completely flood resilient and included some really new and nice amenities for our community. The application also featured the East Kinston Neighborhood Hub and Equitable Development Plan, which is a community planning effort led by Kinston teens for the last few years, which is focused on transforming under-invested blocks in East Kinston into a really nice, community-led and equitably-driven revitalization project where young people and neighborhood residents, who often haven't had the assets or the resources or the chance to be involved in shaping the future of their neighborhood, now have that opportunity. And then lastly, our third project was the Downtown Kinston Mural Program, which was a city-led project throughout two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-two. The murals are still in existence in downtown, but really used art and storytelling and community engagement to revitalize our downtown, get people walking, increase that foot traffic, and show what it's like to build space and build community through arts and culture. So I'm very excited about the fact that we are, again, named a finalist for this award. And it's because of the leadership of just regular, ordinary citizens in Kinston who are stepping up to get engaged in their community and make a difference and improve this future. So the actual awards take place in the end, at the end of June in Denver, Colorado. So we'll have to take a delegation out to Colorado to actually compete for the awards. So we're excited about that, but I'm very hopeful that we'll be bringing home the All-America City title once again for our community.
Thank you, Councilman Suggs, for that information and all the hard work that everybody put into that project. Would there be anything else from the council? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into closed session. If not, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
Motion was made in a second. All in favor, say aye. We are now going into closed session. Yeah, we... Guys, guys, I'm gone. All right, we, we... All right, we're now back in, uh, open session. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion was made in a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.